Everyone, thank you for being here and those at home. I'd like to call the special meeting of the San Marino City Council at the San Marino Center pursuant to Executive Order N 2920 and the coronavirus order. And ask that everybody please rise and join from the flight seat first.
The United States of America, through the Republic of Japan, foundation under our universal liberty and justice law.
The City of San Marino appreciates everybody's attendance and citizens' interest, providing the Council with valuable information. We will first ask for a roll call, please, from the City Manager, Dr. Marlowe. Would you proceed?
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobowski.
Here.
Councilmember Tull.
Here.
It's my understanding the Vice Mayor, you need to excuse today.
Yes.
That's correct. And Mayor Shepherd-Romney.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. The notice of the meeting was posted more than 24 hours in advance at each of the following locations: City Hall, the Public Library, and the Recreation Department, as well as the meeting was posted on the city's website. To ensure that everybody, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers clearly, please speak directly into the microphone, whether you're at home or here. And public comments are also going to be accepted via email due to the COVID pandemic advisory for social distancing. So if you would like to email a public comment, you may do so for any agenda item or at the opening, and it will be read into the record on your behalf. You can do so by emailing thecityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. We will also accept comments from those joining us on Zoom. We have staff facilitating this meeting again for Internet users and to ensure everybody can hear and participate. Please note that all comments will be limited to three minutes, and they will be timed by staff. We thank you for your patience as we navigate through today's process. I would like to ask our city clerk, Acting City Clerk, sorry, Marlowe, to explain how public comment will work for the agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment, and all comments will be limited to three minutes and timed by staff, as the mayor mentioned. We'll accept comments in three ways. First, we'll take in-person comments for each item, and if you'd like to speak, please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to me. Those are located in the lobby. We will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org, and that email address is also found on the agenda. Those comments will then be read into the record, and we must receive them prior to the end of the public comment period for that particular item. And the comments may be summarized if necessary to limit it to under three minutes. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants, and when we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you'd like to speak. The first is using the raise hand feature, which is found by clicking on Participants, and it's on the bottom right side of the screen. That will let us know you'd like to speak, but we just ask that you please not use that feature until it is time to comment for that item, or else we may not see it or know which item you're requesting to speak on. As a second option, you can also send a typed message via the chat box saying that you would like to speak on a particular item. And again, comments will only be accepted until the end of the public comment period for that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marlowe. Do we have the first item or general point of business is public comments. The city welcomes public input. Members of the public may address the City Council by completing a public comment card, and they may speak at this time on any item, any topic that is not an agenda item. I think that's a better way to say it pursuant to state law. The City Council may not take action or discuss those at this time. And this is also will have a time limit, and staff may be asked to follow up. So do we have anybody who's turned in a comment card here?
I do have a request to speak from someone in the audience.
Thank you. Can you approach the microphone, please? Yes. It's all recorded. Don't worry.
Good morning, councilors of San Marino. My name is Shane, and my parents and I have been running the Colonial Kitchen Restaurant down the street for 16 years. Before the pandemic, our restaurant was self-sustaining. Thanks to my parents, it has retained most of its decade-old clientele. When the pandemic lockdown happened, we decided to close our doors and we froze our operations completely. The safety of our patrons is our number one priority. On average, a restaurant's operating cost follows the 30-30-30 rule: 30% for fixed costs like rent utilities, 30% food costs, and 30% labor costs. In a perfect world, the last 10% would be profits, but we are not living in a perfect world. After the two months hiatus, we opened for takeout. In order to offset some losses, we decided to partner with third-party delivery services: Postmates, Uber Eats, DoorDash, Grubhub. Before lockdown, on average, these apps charged restaurants 30% of all orders received through their respective tablets provided to us for a fee. On top of that, in order to get notice on the app, you have to pay these companies an additional $3 to $5 per order. For example, in order of $100, Postmates would take 26% for the delivery plus $3 to $5 in marketing fees. That's more than 30%. In April of last year, no, in April of this year, Los Angeles County rolled out a citywide mandate that set a cap on how much money these apps can take per order. The city set the limit to 15% on deliveries with a $5 cap, a 5% cap on marketing on their app platform. It came as a lifeline for most restaurants. Unfortunately, the city mandate only included unincorporated cities of LA County, San Marino, and incorporated cities within the county has been left out. Thankfully, Grubhub, DoorDash, and Uber Eats have decided to honor the mandate for all restaurants, but Postmates has refused to budge. I have begged and pleaded for them to help, but they passed me on to four different representatives before finally setting their legality on. Currently, Postmates makes 26 commission on each order plus $3 to $5 from the Colonial Kitchen and $5 a week for their tablet. In September, the Los Angeles County decided to set the ordinance expiration date to 100 days after restaurants are able to operate at 100% capacity. This tells me that the closure of dining rooms will be longer than anyone in particular. I'm here to ask the Council to consider putting this issue on your November 18 meeting agenda. Please adopt the city ordinance and implement it retroactively so that small businesses can survive. Please adopt the city ordinance so that other members of other communities might find the courage to speak up, and please adopt this city ordinance so that citizens like me can finally feel like we have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shane, and I appreciate that. As I said, we can't take any action, but we'll take it under consideration, and Stan will be in touch. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
In, perhaps this could be directed at staff and you, the use of these various platforms, that's, it's optional for you, right? So you could get rid of, what's it called? I don't use, what's that? Postmates.
Two of the apps we can't get rid of, two of the apps are optional. One runs on like map services like Google, and they'll use their own third-party to pick it up. Like, we would just get an order that looks like a takeout, you know? So, but still, that doesn't take a chunk out of our money. Yes, we do partner with them, and we do have that contract, but the city set it to 20, and they still, I just found this out a couple months ago, that's why.
I think we've been receiving emails.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify to the Council, it's actually the county that's set down, which is why we're in the county, but we're not incorporated. We're not unincorporated.
Can I ask a question too, Shane? Are you open for outdoor dining now?
Yes, we are. So we were excluded from the facade program that you guys had because we're not in the central CBD. So we paved over our little grass area in front as much as we can so we can set out some tables outside. And now, I'm sure if you drive on the weekends there, it is a lot of people, and we're very happy and fortunate. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
Since we're asking, what are your hours and what's your maximum accommodation outdoors?
Outdoors, right now, we only have eight tables. I don't know the exact number. What was the first part of the question?
The hours.
The hours. We're open daily from 8 to 2 p.m.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Shane. And we will consider, and staff will work with you toward bringing this matter forward if it is needed. All right. Do we have any other public comments online, either via email or in one of the other in the Zoom function?
I do not have any email comments, and I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to close the public comment, and our next item of business is the City Manager's report. So Director, Dr. Marlowe. Director Doctor.
Director Doctor. Thank you very much, Mayor. Actually, Shane's comment was an excellent entry into one of the first things that I want to mention. I have four things for you today. The first thing is that eagle-eyed readers of our City Council agenda will notice that there's a new section that has been added to the end of the agenda section. It is called future agenda items. This is an item that many other cities have on their agendas regularly for reasons that I don't know. San Marino really has never had this item. This provides a mechanism for the Council to ask for items to be included into future agendas. So the Mayor and Vice Mayor and I have had some extensive conversation about this, and procedurally, what will happen when we get to this item is the Mayor will ask if anyone has items to be added to a future agenda. That's your moment, and that's just for the five of you, or obviously the four of you today, for you to suggest items for the agenda. It might be that, for example, Shane's item is one of those that you want to add to your future agenda. It may not be that, of course, to still at your discretion. Once there's a suggestion for brown-end reasons to make our city attorney comfortable, I would point out this is not the time for discussion on that item or to decide whether or not you really want to take action. This is really just a moment to decide whether to put it on the agenda. And because your time is precious and because staff's time is precious, the Mayor and Vice Mayor and I have agreed that we will agendaize items that have support from three of you. Now, when I say support, I don't mean support for a motion. I just mean support for discussion. So at least three of you might not all have the same intention for how the item will end, but you might all want to see a discussion get placed on the agenda. Since we have two attorneys sitting here, I will say it's kind of like granting cert. You don't have to agree on the outcome. You just agree that you want to hear in some discussion.
In that discussion or that agreement, we'll come here in the public here.
Yes, exactly. Yes, so the Mayor will say, does anybody have an idea? You know, you might say, let's talk about the item that was raised earlier about Postmates, and then the Mayor will say, fantastic. Can I just give a show of hands? Do we have at least three people interested? Bam, bam, bam. Great, City Manager, please agendaize this in the future meeting. We won't set the date here because we'll need to do a little bit more research, but we'll know now that this becomes part of your work plan for future, for future Council item. And we did discuss that, and I know Shane was already taken off. We did discuss that with him, so he knows that you are not going to be in a position to take action right now, but that perhaps this will come back a little bit later. So we'll see how it goes. I know this will be our first time with it today, so there may be some starts and stops, but I think it will be helpful. Many of you have had issues that you've wanted to see on an agenda and have not quite been able to figure out how to get it there, so I hope that you find this to be a helpful tool for you. Second thing, I know that our employees' employee recognition is high importance to you all, and you want to know when things are going well, so I'm happy to resuscitate my announcements of catching staff doing great things, and we'll be adding this to my City Manager reports again. We kind of had a break during COVID, not that we weren't doing great things because we were, but everybody Zoomed this meeting. We faded out, but we're fading back. Yes, that's not fading. All right, so I just want to share two kudos that we got from members of the community, for part of our staff. And on the one hand, we got some kudos from one of our dispatchers, Ms. Sylvia Ramos, for outstanding service. There was a false alarm call that happened around 5:30 in the morning, which you can imagine, nobody wants that at 5:30 in the morning. But she described Sylvia as gentle, sweet, reassuring, who showed a lot of compassion. So we appreciate that. And of course, we have fantastic staff over in the Police Department, although we normally focus on our sworn personnel, but our civilian personnel are outstanding as well. So congratulations to Ms. Ramos for that, that kudos. And as I think that you all probably know, we're also getting some great kudos on the Haunt Scavenger Hunt, Halloween Scavenger Hunt. In fact, Mayor Shepherd-Romney had her moment, her up-close-camera moment yesterday on ABC News, and Community Services Director Brian Hall would have sent that out to all of you so that you can see it. And we've gotten some kudos for that as well. Ms. Lips let us know that she was particularly pleased to go do the hunt, and I'm just going to read you what she wrote because it's so cute. She said, "We were amazed at how many cars went by last night to find a pumpkin. It was even more spectacular once the lights went on. It must be so much fun to eat dinner, pile the children in the car, and go out in twilight to find them. A really good replacement for trick-or-treating. Kudos to all." So we really appreciate that. The Community Services staff has been working very hard to find ways to celebrate this Halloween that should have been so glorious on a Saturday and is slightly less glorious, but we are certainly doing our best. All right, so two other things to report to you. The first thing is that you should have been expecting on your agenda today to see an item about the Community Services software, the recommendation to purchase Civic Rec. You did make a recommendation to continue this item to a date certain, which was today, and we went a little further into the contract and found a couple of things that we were concerned about, and perhaps we need a bit of a different procurement process. So we've taken that back, and we'll be looking at that, and that'll come back to you when we're sure that we have a clean contract for you to look at. And then last, but absolutely not least, I just want to tell you a little bit about what's coming for Veterans Day. As you know, the city doesn't normally do an official event for Veterans Day because Memorial Day is kind of our crown jewel in this community, although this year, as with so many things, Memorial Day did not work out the way that we thought it was going to. We tried again on July 4th, which is a different kind of holiday, but nothing has really, nothing has really captured, I think, the joy and the dignity that we tried to do for veterans on Memorial Day. So we are here trying again. We know this was something that was important to you all in the budget process, to ask us to do kind of a one-off Veterans Day item, and so plans are underway. They've been shifting and moving, and of course, trying to keep up the protocols that County Public Health keeps sending us. And so what we have now is it's not a virtual Zoom event. We decided, there was a lot of fatigue with that. We know there's a lot of fatigue with that. We really wanted to do something that would be a little bit more special. So what we are doing is we're rolling out our first-ever outdoor exhibit at Lacy Park, and it's going to feature some of our local veterans. We certainly don't have all of them yet. We are working on that, more about that momentarily, but we're hoping to get as much participation as we can. And so the Hometown Heroes exhibit, it'll be right near the War Memorial. It's going to run for several days. I think November 11th, of course, will start on Veterans Day. I think we'll run through the end of the weekend, and we hope that people will come out, and there'll be signs with each veteran, a quote from them about their service. And so not just for the veterans, but the family can walk and walk around. There'll be physical distancing and that sort of thing, but we hope that people will come out and see that. And I don't want to give any secrets away, but we are also going to try to honor veterans at their houses. Mum's the word on the rest of that. But if we do have veterans that are listening or veterans that you know, please let them know if they'd like to be included in this. We want to include as many people as we can. They'll want to contact Victoria Marshall in our Community Services Department on the Recreation side, and she can be reached at 403-2200, I believe is the phone number, over for Recreation. So call Recreation, ask for Victoria. We'd love to get you included, and we'd love to build this and turn it into something else and have more of these signs on an ongoing basis, and just continue to honor the very special history that we have here. There's also, along with that, a student essay contest going on, so if you have kids that want to write some essays about some important veterans, especially in our community, we'd like to encourage that as well. And that portion of the program is being run out of our Library Department, and so if people have questions about that and want to get involved, they can call the Crowell Library, and that is 300-0777, and we hope, we hope to have a good day, a couple days of people visiting here. So we'll be pushing that out on social media, of course, but hopefully we have a bit of an audience for this meeting. I guess we'll find out, and just wanted to be sure to announce it. So thanks so much for letting me take up some time.
Thank you, Dr. Marlowe, and I wanted to also extend a congratulations to staff for outstanding work during the COVID times and coming up, as well as Council members with some of these great new things for our community. It's been really heartwarming, and I know the Community Services Department, along with Police and Fire, have done an outstanding job. And on the subject of the Scavenger Haunt, it's been extended to be through Saturday. So if you haven't done it yet, tonight's your night. It will be staying up until tomorrow at 3:00 p.m., I believe, and the Rec Department will be still handing out goodie bags until 5:00 at Stoneman for families that complete that for the children. So it's a wonderful event, and I hope people enjoy it.
Thank you. We appreciate your support and suggestions that we've gotten.
All right, going on to the first item of business, we have to open a public hearing on the introduction and first reading of ordinance number O-20-1369 regarding the amendment of the tree preservation ordinance. And can I ask Director Servantes to please give us a presentation about the work that spun into this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. If you recall, about a year ago, the Council directed staff to prepare a code amendment on the tree preservation ordinance. Specifically, the direction that was provided to staff was to look to include changes to the fine structure, include a tree trimming permit procedure or process, include language for emergency tree removals, and to amend certain sections of the violations code of the ordinance. The two most substantive changes include the tree trimming permit requirement procedures, which was, as some of you may know, was once part of the ordinance back up until 2012. The intent of the tree trimming provisions really is to restore past practices that allow the city a better handle as to pruning and tree trimming projects. It also allows for the city to educate a lot of the tree trimmers at our public counter, as well as gardeners at our public counter, as to the do's and don'ts of this type of operation. And so in 2012, when the ordinance was amended, so we lost that ability. The tree fine structure is the other most important component to the changes to the ordinance, and it's really completely changed and revamped. It follows the standards currently adopted by the City of South Pasadena. The proposed fine structure is divided into two sections. These are unintentional damages to trees, as well as intentional damages to trees, and each carries its own fine. The unintentional fine structure requires a fine that essentially doubles the application fee, which is currently 245 for the application. It also, the fine also includes a doubling of the, of the amount of value of the tree. So if the value of the tree was, let's say, for example, $30,000, then the fine would be $60,000. In addition to that fine, the owner is subject to tree replacement, the tree replacement of the trees with the lost canopy of the trees. Going back a little bit, the unintentional fine structure is a little bit more lenient with that respect. All it does is if you found to have damaged a tree unintentionally, the fine structure is that we just double the fine in terms of the application fee, which is 245. That just gets doubled. In addition to that, the amount of trees that are required for replacement doubles as So in going through this process with the Planning Commission, staff, as well as the Planning Commission, at the conclusion of those hearings, were equally concerned with this fine structure, more so because of the unintentional component that we've provided in the fine structure. And of course, the major concerns of staff, as well as the Planning Commission, was how to really enforce, so the unintentional component, because it's a difficulty in proving, you know, whether someone unintentionally damaged a tree or intentionally damaged a tree. So you get into a very slippery slope when trying to look to administer that part of the process. The Planning Commission was also concerned about the amount of trees that are required in terms of replacement. Staff believes that there's a very simple solution to that concern, because if you focus on the tree maintenance or the tree matrix, if you remove a specific-sized tree, it mandates a certain amount of trees to replace that. Currently, at the moment, our urban forester has the authority to grant these permits. In looking at the code, he does not have the authority, or that position does not have the authority, to waive or reduce the amount of trees. And so the simple solution here would be to add the title of the urban forester into that language that allows him the ability of reducing the size of trees pursuant to whether there's room on the property to do so. And just for reference purposes, to look for that section, it is under the Tree Matrix table under subsection E of the ordinance. And so with that said, staff, staff's recommendation for the City Council is to adopt the ordinance on first reading. I also want to provide the Council with additional options that are before you this morning, and that is the option of amending the language that is built into this draft ordinance. Any, any changes that are not sort of, well, changes that can be included into the language can be done so as an amendment with the adoption as well. The Council also has the option of suggesting more substantive amendments to the language and directing staff to return with those changes at a later date to essentially rehear this at first hearing. So with that said, staff is open for questions of the Council and for the public as well.
Can I just ask one clarification of what you just reported? In the, the language, for example, on page six, it talks about the discretion to reduce the number of trees. At section E, for example, it's page six of the attached draft of, or page 113 for our purposes here, but it doesn't say anything about urban forester in that section. So is that something that we couldn't, for example, take into account some of the remarks you just made, so we would still have to amend specific sections today?
Right, correctly.
Okay. So I will first open this up to Council questions. I have others, but I just want to clarify what was in here and what was not. So I don't know who would like to lead. Councilmember Wong, did you have any comments or questions for Director Servantes, I guess?
Yes, somebody unintentional, maybe like a resident hiring his gardener and trim the trees without knowing it.
Yes, someone who, that's probably the best example to use is a property owner who does indeed hire a gardener, who is now not well-versed as to pruning a tree, and so direction is provided to the gardener to prune a tree to certain standards, and they go beyond that. That would be probably the best example to use as an unintentional damage to a tree.
Is there any way that we can prohibit these gardeners from, you know, working in the city in the future, if it ever occurs?
It is a possibility. Under the current code, the Council has the ability of revoking someone's license for the violation of the ordinance. And if you, if the Council recalls, that has happened prior. Thank you.
To do so, would the item have to come before us on appeal? Is that what you're saying?
According to the code, which is in chapter 11, which is the business license section, it authorizes the City Manager the ability of revoking a business license, but under very specific standards, and one of those standards is, of course, the violation of our laws.
All right, but so it would have to be brought forward at the direction of Council, or could it be? I'm just trying to understand.
The one example that had happened in the past was a tree appeal process that was before the Council. Part of that motion was to, I believe, uphold the penalty in addition to that direction to revoke that contractor's license. So it was just a circumstance of that situation that the Council had that direction to provide to staff to revoke that license.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong, did you have any other questions?
No more, thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
You may need a break after I've started. First of all, I'd like to thank Director Servantes, Mayor Shepherd-Romney, and the Planning Commission to have it to this point, to bring it to us. A lot of work has gone into it, and I don't know about the other Council members. I've received a lot of community feedback over this issue, and part of that I'll try to tie into my questions. I think our goal is to have something that the average citizen can comprehend well enough, and if we take it to the lowest level, it might be something that I could follow if I wanted to address a tree in my property. So some of my questions will be worded in that way. May I ask, Director? May I ask Director Cervantes at this point, if we were to go forward with what is proposed, two issues, do you feel that it would be okay for residents to be able to understand it? And also, can you comment on enforcement?
There are, as in any ordinance, we tend to use a lot of jargon that is, of course, easy to understand by staff and council. I do get a lot of calls from residents who really need explanation as to what the intent of the code is, what certain code sections or language means, or what are we trying to refer to. A lot of questions do come to me and staff of the current ordinance as to what a certain language means, and can you help me interpret that? That also is the case for any ordinance, but this one specifically, we do get, as I mentioned, residents who call to find out, you know, I read the ordinance, but can you please explain to me in summary what I need to do? And so from the enforcement perspective, current ordinance as well as this proposed ordinance, it does take quite a length of time of staff and the applicant to really go through a very thorough process. And that process really started about a year and a half ago when we amended the application for a tree removal permit. Prior to the amendment of the application, it was a one pager that the applicant was to supply the city to evaluate a tree. Now it's at least five or six pages because of how much information we need, especially from a certified arborist, details regarding the species of the tree, the size of the tree, and that's all for record purposes. And so certainly the length of the application has grown substantially as well as the steps needed for an applicant to receive their permit, or at least to go through the process. Enforcement currently has been heavily on the fine component of the ordinance, and of course, going out and looking at or responding to tree pruning situations, tree topping situations. That involves code enforcement, it involves the urban forester to evaluate the condition of the tree, to look at how many limbs over three inches have been damaged, and reporting back to the code enforcement officer to eventually send out a notice of violation with the appropriate fine. And so that's, I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. That's a start from what I'd like to ask about. I'm particularly, and I'd like to see if this ties in with your experience, because it simply might be those folks who are comfortable in calling me, but I'm hearing from a lot of elderly people in town, and many of them use some version of, "My trees are as old as I am. Of course, they're going to start to fail." Do you see a number of these issues with older residents, or is it just who I'm hearing?
Just speaking from my experience, and this experience comes from having to penalize residents in terms of the fine structure, in terms of fines. I've had a lot of applications come before my desk on whether there's an appeal of a tree pruning or tree topping situation. I've seen a lot of hardship forms, which is a waiver of the penalty fee, to go in front of a public hearing officer to evaluate the condition or the violation. And those hardship forms that I've gone over have been individuals with fixed incomes who are demonstrating that they cannot pay the fine, and they're demonstrating to me through the hardship form that there is really no way, even through a payment process, that the fine could be paid. And so...
On that note, but go ahead and finish your thought.
No, I was going to say that, well, go ahead. I was done with that.
Okay. How many have you had to, I know you haven't, you probably haven't come prepared with the number, but about how many of those have you seen, and what kinds of fines were you talking about?
In the last six months, I've seen about five, about five or seven across my desk. Each and every, I've only rejected one of those, because there was just the mere fact that they did not supply them with the supporting documentation that they couldn't pay the fine. But the other, you know, five or six did demonstrate that there was just no way that they could pay a fine.
And those fines were...
The fines were at a minimum, at the very bottom of about $9,000 to topping about $25,000.
Thank you. And just so the folks who I'm hearing from can get a response on this, if you were to tell me how many steps it would take, okay, I've got a tree in the back of my yard I think is dead. Can you take me through how many steps that would take to the endpoint where I believe, if I read correctly, once the tree is removed, I have a set period of time to remove the signage about this?
So I'll go through two scenarios, one for the dead tree, and one for a tree that just needs evaluation by an urban forester as part of a tree application process. For a dead tree, we require the applicant to submit the application. We do have an application that's more streamlined online that could be filled out and submitted via online. The fee is waived, of course, during that process. I, as well as a permit, have received the application via the online service and then direct that application over to our urban forester. He will then, of course, visit the site, look at the tree, and determine whether the tree is indeed dead. In some instances, he would ask for an arborist report to determine whether the tree is in fact dead or in a severe decline. Once it's determined to be dead, whether by the urban forester's determination or by supplemental information, he would then notify the applicant, and then the applicant would then be required to post a sign on the tree. If the tree is in the backyard, not visible from the street, the posting would go in the front line. That way the public can see it. In addition to the posting of the sign, the applicant is responsible for sending out a letter to residents within 100-foot radius informing them that a tree is in process for removal. It does give those residents, any passerby, or the ability of appealing the decision of the urban forester. And of course, if it's not appealed, and 15 days have passed on the posting, then the applicant has the ability to removing that tree.
And then after they remove it, they take down their signage within a certain time?
Correct.
Okay. So just by using slash marks as you were doing the steps, it could be up to eight or nine steps?
Yeah, you're looking at about 12 steps.
12 steps.
If, two of those steps is if there's an appeal of the tree application.
And I noticed that, I'm going to skip around a little bit. About the appeal, when we have a posting for the removal of a tree, how often would you say you so far received challenges to the removals of those trees?
In the last six months, about, I've received, to be more specific, I've received about four appeals regarding the replacement requirements of the tree. Those could be handled internally by myself, which I've had recently. On tree appeals that I had no authority to review, we've had, I would say, less than five go before the planning commission.
So I think there might be two categories there. One is the replacement of the tree, but I'm following up on, when I post the sign up front, it's been about five people who have said, "No, this tree shouldn't come down."
Right, those were five individuals in which the urban forester rejected the removal of a tree, and of course, their next step would be to appeal that to the planning commission.
And what was, just so I can get a handle on how these things, how often these, with what frequency these occur, of those five that were appealed, off the top of your head, do you know how many were honored?
They were, from my memory, they were honored, but there were some modifications. There are some modifications to the replacement of the trees by the planning commission.
Yeah, I'm not concerned as much about the replacement, but the action of either removing or not removing, and the just, the upholding of that.
Yeah, the one that comes to mind, which is probably the last one that we had to look at, was the Tocetti's residence, where there were six sycamore trees that were rejected by the urban forester. They appealed to the planning commission, and at the planning commission level, the planning commission overturned the decision of the urban forester and allowed them to remove those six sycamore trees with a reduced replacement requirement.
So I think what you're helping me to understand is that part of the process does work?
It does work, yes, yes.
Good, that was what I was trying to find out. May I continue, Mayor?
Can I just insert one? When we, part of the public notice had to do with the trees that were wrongly removed. So I think we also, which we, you didn't talk to, or Director Cervantes didn't mention, was in the past, there's been some errors on the city's part or residents' parts, perhaps. They have a permit, they agree that this tree is diseased, and somehow there's a problem in the actual removal and a live tree. So part of the notice process also has, if you're asking...
Saved a different way, because I'm not following.
Right. I think we added in the public notice visually on a tree in order to make sure that we're all community members, applicants, and, excuse me, the tree company that comes to remove it are all removing the correct tree, because there's been losses in our community just strictly because of errors. So there's also, that posting and the time period has to do with that, so we avoid problems. Is that correct?
That's a great point. I apologize for not mentioning that. The posting is to remedy a past issue of the wrong tree being removed, yes.
Moving along, I think because, from what I'm hearing, going to the actual ordinance, I received one call from somebody who said, "I respect heritage trees, but for," they said, "I don't understand Latin. I took Spanish in high school. Is there any way that we can, rather than using the formal names of the trees, to," again, I'm trying to see how user-friendly we can get this for, again, a resident with the least amount of knowledge. So that would be on page 18. Is there some way that that can be simplified for residents when they're thinking about, Mayor, you said that was done?
I think we were going to put parentheticals there of common name, yeah.
Okay, great.
So that might be something in the final one. I think it's an easy fix. There was that in the list form, but it's not in the ordinance form.
And again, my whole goal is to make it so that I can understand it. Also, would it be beneficial under the ordinance for certified arborists, not only being ISA, but state licensed under categories and then naming, I think they're CMD categories, so we can make sure we've got somebody who is fully qualified?
That's a possibility, yes. And to go back a little, one step to your last question, we could do what we've done with oak tree definitions and provide both sort of correct names on there to be more simplified.
Thank you. And then going back to the issue of replacing like for like, particularly with heritage trees, and I'm sorry to keep referring to this sorry little specimen in the front of my house. I have, one part of my block has just beautiful oak trees, and starting with my home and going east, we've got these decrepit things with always dead branches, and I should not say aloud that I wish someone would back into it so I could get something beautiful and more fitting. If that tree were to die, you wouldn't want to replace it like for like. So is the urban forester involved in that process, depending on the soil conditions, and how is that conveyed to the property owner?
Yes, so the urban forester is not going to go out and determine that the soil is...
Or whatever conditions.
Yes, so I guess to best answer the question, the urban forester is going to utilize a lot of supplemental information from the applicant via an arborist report. The arborist report will help the urban forester determine whether the replacement tree could go back in the same location as the tree that's coming out. And in many cases that I've noticed, diseased trees or disease that are found to have certain insect infestation, the urban forester does not recommend putting the replacement tree in the same location, but moving it further away from that original location, possibly not even in the same yard area.
But if I have a minimal yard, for example, and, or let's take my sad oak tree, granted that falls under different rules because it's a parkway tree, but regardless, that exact tree probably isn't going to cut it, as evidenced by five or six around it.
Right.
So is there still that option of changing completely, even in my yard?
It was in the category of heritage.
Okay, could be just from the category.
Right.
And I'm doing this in part two to try to...
No, you're right.
I was just saying, I perhaps wasn't loud enough. I think when the urban forester makes the final, in rare circumstances, it's like for like as a requirement, it's a heritage tree. If it is a heritage tree, it has to be replaced with a heritage tree.
Right.
It's any of those Latin names which we're going to correct and add the common names, not correct, but add to for information. So there's about 37 choices, yes, it's 39, it's quite a bit.
So Mayor, I thank you for that, and where it says, "And must be replaced with one of the following," could we add the further definitive sentence saying, "It does not have to be the same as removed," so that it's pretty clear what their options are? Again, I want to make this as user-friendly as we can get it, because this is such a big issue.
Can I just add something if you don't mind, Councilmember? The heritage trees are on the list because they're heritage trees in certain areas, because they've been used in certain areas of the area. And the problem with that subsection, that paragraph B, is that if I'm living on the east side of town, east side of town, and have a tree that's a heritage tree, because there's a lot in that area, and it's traditionally been part of that, and I would replace it with a heritage tree that was developed because it was used on the west side of town, that doesn't make any sense. So, and so that creates a problem, or it creates a problem only in the senses, it's not accomplishable if you want it to accomplish. So I would like to either have the urban forester approve that, I have other problems with this section, or something to that effect, so we're not mixing and matching throughout our area. Like sometimes we see where, even on the parkways, where there's a whole bunch of oaks, one type of oaks, and then we planted a different type of oak, and it didn't make any sense to them.
So maybe when we come to you to give some language that might help us in clarifying this, because again, I think we just need to make it as simple as possible for residents.
I will, can I just follow up on your comment? The one issue that was brought up, I think by Director Throne, back when we talked about street trees and why there is a variance in certain places, is that if you have a continuous run of the same type of tree, then it raises the possibility that those trees will be diseased and pass the disease or have a problem or insect, you know, the category. So that we do vary tree selection within heritage in order to avoid like a mass diop, if you will.
Shouldn't they just be wearing masks?
That would be great, just like we wear a seatbelt. It's kind of the same concept, right?
No, I understand, I understand.
But the point is just, I know where you're going, and I, to make it easier, but it would be hard then if we're talking about sections or which street then to... or which street then to limit them to what's on that street necessarily. I don't know how we could do it. But if you have suggestions, I'm more than willing.
Well, we have that, we have that book. The, the, I think...
That's what's reflected here.
Oh, okay.
Those are all, I'm sorry, on page 18, you know, on the heritage tree list. That's where that, that list came from.
Right.
So it is broad and the idea is that by planting a mix in, at least in private yards, we're not adding to the same look and potentially a problem. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Um, moving on to page 19, irreversible. Um, I'd like to use an example and I think it, on appeal, certainly got fine removed. Okay, so, um, there was a tree that had been clearly topped. Unfortunately, the photograph was taken in the fall after it had dropped its leaves and by golly, it was topped. Um, come spring, they make their way on their appeal and lo and behold, it's a beautiful canopy. Tree looks great. So this is a tree that has a winter and a summer outfit, if you will. And, um, it looks god awful in the winter and in the summer it was fine. And you know which one I'm talking about. I think they got fine removed, didn't they?
Uh, yes, completely.
So, um, this brings, you know, to, to there the discussion of irreversible. And we've got to decide if we're going to cite those trees, um, knowing what kind of photograph we're going to get. And I really don't like getting into selective enforcement because if we cited that tree because it was observed and they came and with their photo and they got it reversed, what about the poor guy that doesn't know to wait till the canopy reappears and it's started to find? Sorry, but that issue concerns me. Any comment?
Other than that was a motion by the planning commission. It, I, I understand that the point of, of the timing issue, of course, where a tree has been topped and they wait for the appeal hearing and by the time the, the appeal hearing is set forth, it's...
So I think we go to the deeper issue of irreversible. And are we calling that summer clothing irreversible? And the winter, are, are the summer not irreversible? And the winter irreversible? I mean, I think we need to dig deeper into the definition of irreversible with the specific example.
It, it would be an example of, uh, that one specific that I, that I'm aware of would have, would be a good example of sort of the irreversible factor there. But they have to demonstrate in a one-year period, a full one-year period, whoops, that, that, you know, as, as a tree sort of, uh, drops its leaves because of the season, that if that were to occur within that one-year period. And of course, when it drops its leaves, it's in a disfigured fashion. Then that's not irreversible. That, that wouldn't be a candidate for that. Um, the reason I'm saying that now is because what we're trying to address in the current code is, is how to address them. And, and that's why we, we included the one-year period where in that one-year period, they have to demonstrate that the tree's going to be, it's going to survive.
Yeah, I'm following this one. It certainly has. Mayor?
Can I just follow up? Also, I, I will say that planning commission did speak to the fact that one year might not be enough because, for example, it's the same concept elsewhere. In the code, you know, you require somebody to plant a new tree. And that baby tree, it's difficult unless they water and really take care of it. It often can live for a year and then, you know, at 18 months or two years, depending on, it's not getting that maintenance, that tree's dead and they take it out and they've solved their problem. Then they, or they've got their desire that they don't have a tree there. And that really doesn't do the city any good. So I would hope, and I think planning commission members spoke to this, was we would get a two-year period or we would have something with some longevity across the board that would say you have to keep the replacement alive for two years. I know it's in one year in one place, it's in three years in another. We kind of have to come on a sweet, we have to play Goldilocks here, but, and make the rule about both irreversible damage, tree replacements, pick a time longer than a year and make it universal so everybody, all residents are aware, they're committed. When they're under this tree, either removal, pruning, replacement, all those things have the same requirement. And I would suggest it's at least two years to make a commitment and that would apply in this. We could see how if their damage is not, uh, fully repaired, winter, fall, I love the different outfits of the tree, but that we would see it over a longer period of time. And it's not about gaming the system as to when you come in with an appeal or something like that. I think that would be good for everybody in the city and it would promote the same concept that we're getting to. Thank you.
Good idea. To make it more uniform, so when we have to do replacement trees, those have to last three years, I would support making this three years. So then, that takes us to our next issue. At any given time, we've got, I'm going to go low on this, 100 trees all over town that are in these defined periods where they have to live, owners can't take them out. Some of them might be in the rear of the property. Realistically, that's very, very difficult to enforce. And it really comes down to reporting by, for lack of a better term, an interested party, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I'd like to move on and below tree height, um, if we could add, again, for that homeowner like me, tree trimming. Um, I'd like a definition of what tree trimming means since we use it as we move along through the ordinance. Um, for example, on the next page, it says, "Approving of tree trimming application." So just so I will know what qualifies as a trimming, I might be able to add that. Uh, on our agenda, it's 19 or on the ordinance, um, where it has the definitions, I'm recommending after tree height, which has a definition, adding tree trimming. Um, and then, um, under prohibitions, would you be comfortable, Director, if rather than adding the additional wording for a person to remove any established tree, blah, 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 just say tree meeting permit criteria?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, I have a few other questions. It's a little bit confusing to me, maybe, that there was something implied here that would have been a little bit easier. Under requirements for a tree trimming permit, 2B2, the location and description of the property. How, how, how do we describe the property? What does that mean? Just a word residential or commercial?
No, when we mentioned, uh, location and description of property, we're referring to a plan that shows the exact location of the tree.
Location and description?
Description meaning species of the tree, um...
Could we spell that out just for, again, making it very, very user-friendly? And then, yes, I would understand. Also, um, tree trimming standards will be performed going right below that to item 5, um, accordance with ISA standards. Um, if we want to use those standards, I think we need to attach the sections of ISA that apply to the tree trimming. That will only be helpful to the tree trimmer or to somebody who is uncertain. Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, and again, it's referenced down below in F. So just attaching the ISA standards. I had asked you earlier, moving on to E, 2B, um, about when I want to remove a tree, the application contents. Um, to make it simple for those of us who are sort of overwhelmed in reading this, could that go into some kind of a bullet form or taken out of the narrative so that I can look down at it and almost make a checklist as I am going into my property for the first time to see if that's an applicable tree?
We can do that.
Thank you so much. Then the replacement matrix. Um, as has been expressed a number of times, first of all, we know that we've, we've got an enforcement issue with, once those trees are replaced. But let's, let's talk about a 13-inch trunk. So we've got something, maybe I'm trying to demonstrate here, maybe this wide in diameter and to use four 24-inch boxes for this. Um, that feels extreme to me, particularly if I don't have a large lot and if I'm pleased already with the other trees on my property and, um, it, it crowds me out. We, that feels to me like to be pulling in the urban forester more than we would want. Um, can there be some correlation with lot size, maybe? Or district? Um, like I said, that just feels... 37-inch or greater, I, I totally get that because if you've got a tree that big, it's, it's got a large root system, a large canopy. You know, that's fine to replace it. But can you comment on that?
Yeah, we, I, I've never studied the ability of, of a tree replacement process by looking at the lot size or proportions of lot size versus tree replacement. Uh, it's always been, in, in my own experience dealing with an appeals process, uh, visiting the site, looking at, at the amount of room that's, that's on the site, looking at really the landscaping design that they currently have and not interfering with the design that's in place. Um, also, but in, taken into consideration or factor is, uh, where the tree is going to be removed and the soil conditions, whether one can go back in the same location. And so, um, it's never been a condition where we are waiving the replacement but looking for, um, sort of best management practices, I guess, for lack of a better way of saying it, in terms of where a tree can go and survive. And, and you, you, you just mentioned that, that overcrowding conditions could be detrimental to a young tree. And so we also take that into consideration. Um, I, I can't speak for the urban forester, but at least in my experience in making decisions on these things, uh, I've, I've had, uh, factors involved with, uh, design of landscaping, uh, not sort of exacerbating a condition that, that is currently in place and, uh, still requiring some replacement, not so much of a canopy replacement, but at least, uh, some, some type of, uh, additional trees, whether they're smaller in size or at least a, a reduction by the larger tree.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I follow up on this? We do have in the residential design guidelines that there's a minimum of one tree per 50-foot of lot width. So that does influence that we always do look to replacing them. And I think this has come up a lot on appeal to planning commission and Director Savantes and, um, Mr. Estrada have struggled with the, the matrix that you're talking about. So, um, I think that there are changes that could be made to that paragraph, I believe it's E. And Director Savantes mentioned part of it was that adding an urban forester and giving the urban forester discretion and then just taking out the wave requirement for tree replacement. But instead, it just gives them as all the way down before it gets to us. Of course, if the homeowner is not happy with the decisions by Mr. Estrada and then reviewed by Director Savantes, they still have the option to go before planning and ultimately come to us. But it gives them, um, more ability to take into account the circumstances in their yard, specifically in their landscaping plan. They're still going to have to plant something, but it might not be within that matrix. So that is part of the idea. That I think is a good change, though.
No, that's, that's great. So then, under the matrix where it says replacement trees, um, is it acceptable to comfort me by using the term, um, beyond the one, where it says number and size under number, to put up to? Um, or do we really need to leave it at that number? I, I just, um, I don't want to look at this and say, "Oh, my gosh, I've got to put in eight trees if I'm doing this." But no, it can be up to eight trees. Is, is that acceptable to add? Or would that throw it off legal reading?
No, it would be acceptable to add, of course. It would require the, the council as a whole to make a decision altogether.
Sure, thank you. Um, Mayor, are you okay?
I'm sure. We'll keep an eye on we all.
Exactly. That's why I said we'll need a...
Since we're talking about this, I know.
Oh, I had somebody call me about this. So on item 6, notification, item A, they had, they, they noticed as they needed to. They put up, um, everything up, they gave the date. And lo and behold, the removal company can, um, canceled the day they were supposed to do it. And this was an older resident. Uh, they went out and told all the neighbors, "No, no, no, it's been moved to such and such a date." And then they had a second cancellation. And they felt this company was not reliable. So the tree's dead, they've got to remove it. Um, is there any way that we can handle that kind of situation? Um, I feel really bad for her because she's not talking about moving. And I said, "Don't move. Um, let's see, you know, if there's some way we can work around this." Are there any thoughts on that?
Well, the, the posting is required to be over 15, no, no fewer than 15 consecutive days upon receiving the, the action of the urban forester. After the 15 days and there's a schedule for removal by the contractor, um, and there's a, a rescheduling of that contract to remove it, that, that has no concern with respect to the posting or notification as long as they, number one, send out a mailer to the 100-foot radius and number two, have the sign posted for no fewer than 50 days. Whatever happens after that is at the, at the discretion of the, of the homeowner.
So then, are we able to amend where it says as well as the date and time of the scheduled tree removal? Because if I send you my, as my neighbor, November 3rd at 10:00 a.m., and the guy cancels, you're going to wonder what's happening, particularly if he cancels the second time that I do it. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable with letting everyone know, but I'm, I'm hearing that cancellations or delays, you know, they're running late on another job or something, aren't uncommon. And again, um, I'm hearing from more senior, senior citizens about how frazzled this makes them when their circumstances are out of their control. So I guess my, my rhetorical question, I don't know the answer, is date and time.
Yeah, and that's really for the purposes of, of providing as much information to the residents as possible. But the 15 days is really key. There's the two things. There's the notification process and waiting for 15 days. Whatever happens after that is, again, Whatever happens after that is, again, at the pleasure of the property owner. But I see your point with providing notice to the residents, identifying a date and time for removal, and that doesn't happen, or it happens further out from that day. I see the confusing part to that.
Just put original date and time.
For the earliest date scheduled for removal.
Yep.
So then, we'll be able to strike that?
Yeah.
Thank you. I think that's important.
I think we said a different thing. I thought we're going to leave the date and time in, but we're going to say the scheduled, and then...
Originally scheduled.
Originally scheduled, so then, you can even put parentheses about some other, but we're going to leave it so people know and are aware, but we're not going to hold the residents to completing it or having to do other notice.
And we need to know that, so that...
So we need to let them know that if it doesn't occur, no, you don't need to go back to everybody. Because this person didn't go back twice to everybody.
So if we can add the wording... Thank you, that makes sense.
So we'll do something about it. Yes, thank you.
Next question, under C, the permitting shall permit proof of the required noticing to the community and development director. So that, we have everything, I's dotted and T's crossed, shall it be in writing, or by mail, or just to make sure that we don't have problems afterwards?
No, we require that in writing, currently.
Okay, so then, we can just read?
It's standard practice for the applicant to submit in writing.
Okay.
And it's an affidavit that they sign that says that they follow the posting requirements.
Oh, great, thank you. Okay. Item F, under, where are we? Neil? Page 115?
Yes.
Okay, so, emergency. All right, I've got an emergency, and this tree's got to come out. However, there's an appeal, so that extends it 15 days, and then the city clerk has another 15 days to schedule it for hearing. So if it's really an emergency, that tree could be dropped over and dead, and locking something by then, right?
Right.
Is there any way around that?
Certainly, you could amend the dates that are specified in the ordinance. There's never going to be a position where we feel comfortable limiting the appeals process together, so that's not part of the statute.
So what's the least you could do if something's an emergency, where we're not adding 15 days, or 30 days off the top, if, you know, someone wants to...
Well, under an emergency situation...
Hello?
We could, we could give discretion to staff in that situation.
That would be really helpful, to maybe use the word discretion. Thank you. Down below, under G2, that's where we've got that period of three years. Oh, transplanted. From where? Where do you transplant trees from? That has been treated.
Yeah, so we've had one very recent transplanting of a tree on, well, essentially an oak tree was dug up from a property and moved to another location on the same property. And there's a guarantee of a year upon, from what I've seen in the application by the urban forester, there's an assurance that in a year, the tree is going to, of course, survive that transplanting. If not, then there's a specific tree replacement as part of that.
So it's usually from within the property?
Right, and it happens very, very rarely.
And here, it's telling us three years.
But it's three years.
Sorry, three, sorry.
That's important. Maybe we put the number three there, too. That's an important thing, so they don't assume it's a year. Right.
And that's going to be a uniform of three, everything's three, three, three? Okay, that's helpful in understanding transplanting. Moving on to page 118, tree restoration plan. I think, to reiterate there, under a heading, I think to explain what it is and when it's in effect unless we have it close by for the applicant to quickly reference. Is that so?
Yeah, I think that goes back to your ISA standards, where if, and I know they have such standards in brochures and information, that we could attach that information to the ordinance, or at least make it a handout.
Could we then, in our early page where we added definitions, maybe add tree restoration plan, because I would not know exactly what that means under item three, and it's telling me all the requirements of it, but I want to know by definition what a tree restoration plan is. So maybe upfront to do that, and then reference it as we move along?
Yeah.
Yes.
On that same page, before we continue on, C talks about, still up above on page 11 of the ordinance, or 118 in our packet, the small c, 3c, talks about the tree cities arborist, and I think we need to update arborist to urban forester. Are you with me?
Yep.
And then, on the, in G, underneath that, at the bottom of that section, or almost the bottom, third to last, it talks about the replacement tree dies within one year. Again, I think we need to change that. One year is just not long enough to see in any tree recovery or replacement, up to the three. Thank you.
That makes sense. As I'm nearing the end of the ordinance, and again, so much thanks to those who were involved in this. This is a mighty project. My biggest concern, that I've mentioned every time we've addressed tree ordinances, is education materials that are detailed, and it was also recommended to me, we have English, Mandarin, and Spanish, so that we have something that is user-friendly, and I think maybe it's okay that we've gone to this point without receiving something in the mail, because it's now, hopefully, it's going to be one of our final iterations, you know, when we look back and we can all follow this. So we had in 2007, a permit to prune, 2010, each branch, 2011, 2012, 2018. I think we really need to feel confident in what we're doing now as we put it to bed, because there may be someone who remembers what the ordinance was, when they did it before, and that was then, and this is now. And I think we just really need to get something very thorough out there to our residents. And with deference to my colleagues, thank you for allowing me so much time.
Thank you for going through that. That was very helpful. We got a lot done. Councilmember Paul.
Yes, just some issues. First of all, what was the, what was the tree permit that was required back in 2012? Did it have reference to heritage trees, oak trees, or just any tree?
It was established trees, and there was a provision in the code about oak trees requiring city council approval.
Okay. And that was not just front yard, but also backyard?
Correct.
Yeah, my concern is always the nanny state part of this, if we're talking about somebody's backyard, but if we're looking to protect something like this, I think it's important. I do have some issues. First of all, I'm looking at I-27, which is the requirement for tree removal permit, subparagraph B, and I know Councilmember Jacobowski mentioned the first part of this, heritage oak trees must be replaced with heritage oak trees respectfully. Let's just state, a heritage tree may be replaced with a heritage tree, and an oak tree must be replaced with an oak tree. Secondly, we refer to protected specimen trees must be placed with specimen or heritage trees on the list of protected heritage and specimen trees. Quite frankly, that didn't make any sense to me. What is a protected specimen tree? Where is that defined?
The only instance where there would be a protected heritage tree would be in the citywide historic survey that's been completed.
But that's not, and I don't mean to cut, well, I do mean to cut you off, but I just want to redirect you. I'm talking about protected specimen trees. We, that is not defined in here, and so, we can't, this sentence just does not make any sense to me. So this could be redrafted to, I think I know generally what you're getting at, however, it's something that needs to be specific. Following that, there are two other issues that I have. You define a certain oak as both an oak and a heritage tree. We shouldn't, because we have different standards established when it comes to tree trimming, they either have to be one or the other. An oak tree has to be an oak tree, a heritage tree has to be a heritage tree. An oak tree is also a heritage tree, although generally we would consider it as, when you have different standards, it might confuse people. So, make clear what, remove the oaks from the heritage tree and put them in the oak tree oak. And the other issue I have is, you say generally fruit and palm trees are not acceptable tree replacements for any approved tree removals. However, we have a fruit tree that's part of our heritage tree. Now, I know you say generally, but we should say with the exception of a citrus heritage tree, or maybe even mention it, because I see citrus sinensis, sininus, Latin, I took Spanish in high school, too, that is listed as a heritage tree, and yet we make this statement that the sweet orange tree cannot replace the sweet orange tree. So that should be cleaned up. Generally, and we talked about it with, what is our, what are our options with respect to an unlicensed person coming in and cutting a tree? Who can't take with their license they never got. I can, I guess that, can we increase the fine with respect to the homeowner using an unlicensed contractor, because that falls on them?
You could certainly amend the code to address that, and that's the exact example. But currently, if there's an unlicensed individual that performs a, or that violates the code in general, we can also speak specifically to a tree issue, they're subject to a notice violation fine of $50, and that's all that we can do in that case.
Can I follow up on that? Usually, do they license, like gardeners, like, you know, the neatest people at the truck, so we revoke that license, so they can come into the city and work?
Yeah, we specify, under a business license, we specify what their trade is, and so, whether gardener, they're specified as being a gardener. If they're contractor, specialty contractor, they're specified as that. Tree trimmer is also very much specified in their licenses, that's what they do. It's not a general business license with their business name on there, it does specify exactly what they're for.
But for somebody who doesn't even register with the city?
Someone who fails to obtain a business license and commits a violation, again, is subject to a notice violation fine, and that can be as low as $50.
Can we increase that?
Sure.
That's a good deal.
In terms, so in terms of the changing the fine, it would be a lot easier to change the fine under this ordinance than it would be under the business license code, because the business license code refers to a lot of taxes or taxation fees. And so, I would much prefer that, if we're looking to go down this road, that we look under the violations section of this ordinance to address an unlicensed individual committing a violation, and what the fine would be for that.
Thank you.
So we should, that should be put on the list of possibilities. Finally, more than 10% of the foliage or of an oak tree, or more than 20% of a heritage tree or established tree, will it be that obvious? I mean, if someone's already done it, how do you tell if it's 10%, or 20%, or 15%, or 25%? How is that done?
That, that's a great question, and that...
I only ask great questions.
...at the enforcement part of this, the argument of the enforcement of these ordinance. The only way, if this were live today, the only means that I have to convince me of the 10% or 20% would be through an urban, sorry, a certified arborist. And so, I could request that an arborist submit an evaluation of the tree to determine how much has been pruned on that tree. Otherwise, I would not, myself would not...
So it's not unworkable, it's just, it just requires, if it gets to this point, it just requires something more. Okay, right, thank you. More questions? Thank you.
I have two. I know we've gotten into the detail of a lot of things, and I appreciate my councilmember Jacobowski and Talton, and councilmember Wong coming in with specifics, so we can make this as good as it can be, and there are always, I know a lot of work has gone into it, so I thank staff and Planning Commission for their work on this as well. I just wanted to bring up also, echo what was initially brought forward by councilmember Wong, was the intentional versus unintentional. We have this new idea about who can, who might face penalties, and the severity of those penalties depend on the intentionality, quote-unquote, of their action. And we try to define that, but I think we're going to have a difficult time. And truly, I think that came into this ordinance because we pasted, cut and pasted the South Pass section, which has it. But I've reviewed Pasadena, San Gabriel, Palo Alto, Arcadia, Beverly Hills, I mean, I have a list and a binder of other tree ordinances, and nobody else that I could find does make a distinction between intentional and unintentional. So I would ask that we remove that definition, and just because I also think, and this was brought forward, I've seen Planning Commission struggle with this at times, and we've had appeals here, I don't think our colleagues, and staff in particular, wants to make a determination as to whether a homeowner or property owner or resident did something intentionally or not.
Unless you're doing it on the Sunday.
Unless you're doing it on the Sunday. And, you know, with the people that they hired from Home Depot in the little pickup truck, but we don't need to go there. Those things happen, but I think to make this add an element where we're deciding an intention of our friends and neighbors is a mistake to go down that road. So I would like to go back to how we had it before and kind of strike that language and put those two things together, and ask Director Cervantes to come back and reduce that intentional element, because I do think it's a problem. And I don't want to put staff at first blush even out there, having to say, having to confront somebody and say, "Do you know what you're doing?" So, the other issue that I had had to do with is bringing tree trimming back in the big picture. I think it's great that we do. However, I would suggest, I know people do maintenance, and tree trimming is part of the maintenance, and I would like to lead with maybe that you don't need to hire an arborist, and you don't need to pay for anything else, just come in and get a permit, and you could do it for free and continue on with your tree maintenance if you're not doing more than 10% or 20%, and you're using somebody on a list that the city has, or they have an arborist, an ISA standards, or I love the California license. If you're using one of these companies, and we just said, these companies are ones, get back, I remember when I first moved here, it was great to have that resource available to residents. We're on our, we're not saying we're recommending, we're just saying these have arborists on staff, they have California license, they meet a certain level of professionalism, and we direct them to, anybody on this list, call them up. And truly, that list can be open, and we can add names all the time, and also, if there is something wrongful, then that could be, you're not going to be on the list for a period of a year, but we're not recommending anybody in particular. Anybody can apply to be on that list and confirm with you that they have. So I'd love to add that to this, our website and this, and really bring up, I'm looking at page 111, or four, whatever it is, and it's the last section under tree trimming, and it says, "The property owner is not required to obtain a permit, but maybe it's that, can get a free permit for removing dead foliage or branches less than three inches in diameter from any established tree," where the work is performed by, and we have to work on the language, and I hope, you know, a city-approved tree trimming company, or city-licensed tree trimming company, and see the list. Attachment A, or at city website, will be updated on an annual or semi-annual basis, however we want to phrase that. And I think that would be right off the bat, just come in, show us that you're doing this, and you don't have to go through all of these other steps. Would be a benefit to all residents, making it easy and making it free, but we're just doing a check right there. So I hope we can support that concept and work that into the next edition. So I hope we can support that concept and work that into the next edition and put it up front, like the section. That was the other thing, it starts right away with the tree trimming, where you have to determine that you have harm, or risk of injury, or that you have physical damage. You know, we start right in in the worst case scenario. So I would like to see this to be a permit that's free for residents to do what we would think of as normal maintenance, and that we help them do that. And then anything else, I think, can follow through. So those are my two big picture, otherwise I appreciate everything.
Can you take us back to the C comments, what page we're on, or the fines?
I was talking about the penalties. I'm looking at the revised versions of on page 1-16 to 1-17. So it's section H, nine in our packet to 10. Or 1-16, 1-17?
I have three minds, and it starts at 21.
I don't know, I'm not on the same, I'm just using the notebook that we have, I'm sorry.
Okay, so let me go to that.
Sorry. I know there's too many. So in your notebook, what I'm talking about on the penalties, you mean about intentionality?
Actually, what the penalty adds up to with cost. Where is that addressed? What violation is going to cost me?
The H, H2A and H.
There we are. H2, okay. A. Am I? Yeah.
A is, applies to unintentionally damaging, and then B has to do with the intentional. And I just, I don't mind the language under A or B, but I don't want, I think it's difficult and put staff and everybody involved in the appeal process, and we've never had this concept, and cities, no other city that I could find other than South Pass has a judgment that makes it so subjective as that you're determining a person's intention.
So under penalties, again, as an uneducated homeowner, I'd really like some way for it to be more spelled out to me. And I know it varies tree by tree, what kind of dollars we're talking, but when I look at this, I may say, oh, gosh, this might cost me 500 bucks if I don't do it, because I'm not paying attention to the one, two, three, and four items. Is there some way we can, again, dumb that down so that I can understand in a more, I think I'll use the word intimidating way, what it's going to cost me, because right now it just feels a little too narrative, and I'm not sure exactly what it would look like, but do you understand what I'm trying to explain?
Right, well, that was a problem that I brought up long ago when the other members of council decided to go with the concept from South Pass that has to do with the replacement of value of the tree, because that's, that's that B2, because that's always so vague. That's why in the past we've had a strict, you know, 5,000, 10,000, 25.
I really have a problem with this, because if I'm thinking about it, and it's just so much for a layperson to absorb, if you're at the bottom of page nine with H2A, and you go all the way over, that's hard to grasp and conceptualize if you haven't been part of this room and this discussion. I wish there was some way for an average homeowner, we can just make that clearer. And Mayor, I'll defer back to you, since you said you have, you know, addressed this previous.
I think I lost. That was the problem. I was trying to make it easy and specific, and I believe that there were two of us that voted, excuse me, that voted to, and three wanted to change to the tree replacement concept as suggested by Director Sivantes. So that direction was given, and so that's what we have. And it is intentionally vague, because the value of trees depends so much on the circumstance of the tree. And in my mind, it's always problematic, because we have situations where the tree is cut down, and our urban forester comes in, and if they take a picture of a stump or a width, and then they must guesstimate from that point on. And so it is, there is a lot of subjectivity to that, but I don't know how else, other than going back to what we had before, which is just having a specific cost, which I know is problematic for other reasons. But that tends to be, this tends to be, the concept of replacement value tends to be where cities are going, because I do see it in other cities beyond South Pass, not the intentional, unintentional, but the value of the tree. So it might be in the sense like there would be an example. I think that South Pass, or perhaps it's Pasadena, has a page that's an example that actually talks about, I can't remember the specifics, but it might say a 40-foot birch tree with, or whatever it is, a sycamore, who knows?
Example calculation.
That, how they figured it, right. And I know that I've seen that on a website, and I can work with Director Sivantes and our city attorney, because I believe there is such a thing out there, and if we're going to go with this, I appreciate what you're saying, but maybe it could be referring to an attachment as example. It must be in the ISA, we could pull something out of theirs, or there is another city, I'm sure that I've seen that where they do that.
Even though we need it in the ordinance written in the manner in which it is, as a layperson, this is so overwhelming, and if I want to do work on my property, I need some kind of reference tool that I can comprehend. Thank you. All right, can we take a five minute break for this time? That's all right.
Thank you. And then we'll go to.
And I believe next we need to open up to public hearing at this time, and let's see if there's anybody who would like to make a comment, or has emailed in a comment.
Yes, I do have one quick written comment I received on Zoom that I'll read, and then we have someone that would like to speak as well. The written comment is from John Dustin, and it says, "Good morning, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I have suggested a spelling correction for the proposed tree ordinance on page one of the ordinance 1-8, subsection B, under the definition of heritage tree. In line 10 of that paragraph, quercus lobata appears to be a spelling error and should read quercus lobata as it does on page two of the proposed ordinance under the definition of oak tree." So it's Mr. Dustin's comment, and I received an email from Jennifer Giles with a letter, and she has also indicated she would like to speak. So Ms. Giles, you can go ahead now if you're ready.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I apologize for my late email to you last night, but I wanted to bring to light a condition which I think reflects what you've been speaking with for the last hour or so regarding the tree ordinance. There was an occurrence in our neighborhood, of which I think several of you are aware of, but I just wanted to highlight it once again. My name is Jennifer Giles, I live at 2292 the Rain Road. This is with regards to tree trimming that occurred in August and October of this year at 2255 the Rain Road, which is the northeast corner of the Rain and San Marino, which is a very busy intersection. And I just really would like to kind of highlight a few things. The homeowner, I applaud them for approaching the city and asking for directions, and I agree, the tree ordinance is very wordy and difficult at times to sort of mull your way through. And I recently removed a tree and was quite amazed at the process of the tree removal and who I needed to speak with, and I need clarification. So I feel that, yes, there needs to be some way of reducing that down in order to create something that's easy for people to understand. So the homeowner approached the city asking what to do, they had a lot of dead branches on two very prominent trees on their property. Because they're on a corner, they have sort of two sides of the house that are very visible to the public. And so they asked, do I need a permit? They were told no. So they contracted with a company that was permitted to do work in our city, and started the removal of the dead limbs on the tree, which alerted the neighbors, because it was such a drastic cutting back of the trees, which you can see in my letter that I sent you. I clipped a photo from Google Maps back in 2015, showing, you know, how scrawny those two trees do look. And then the trees were trimmed in August. I was at the town at the time, and when I returned, I was shocked to see what had been done. Those are the two photos that are at the bottom of page one, showing how unruly those trees looked after the trimming in August. Then I guess the company, the tree trimming company came back in October and completed their job of trimming even more dead branches from specifically the sycamore tree, which is located on San Marino Avenue. Both times, neighbors in our community called the city, alerting them to what we felt was a tree popping incident without approval. And then after everything was all said and done, the photos that we see on page two are the ones that are the final outcomes of this. And Mr. Estrada was kind enough to come to my home and speak to me about it, along with many other neighbors about it. But I was really kind of bothered by his response, in the sense that he told me his hands were tied, and that he couldn't do anything but let the homeowner continue, because there was nothing specifically stated in our code that required the city to intervene on the trimming of the dead branches and how the ultimate outcome of that tree looked. Even though the trees, both trees are slowly dying and have been so for the last several years, he claimed to me that the city has no right to force a homeowner to remove a dead or diseased tree unless they would like to do so themselves. Obviously, that's an extremely expensive option, as I know, because I recently did it myself, because our tree was definitely dead. So because there was some green evidence filling these trees, they were allowed to be kept. But I think what really bothers me the most is that there's really nothing in our code that stipulates anything regarding overzealous pruning, and it does not exclude, there's really nothing in there about a permit for pruning trees, which I really feel that there should be, when the result of this tree now is one that is very ugly, and now looks like it's been topped. The trees, they look stunted and ugly, and it reflects poorly on our neighborhood, and I would really rather look at a tree probably with dead limbs as opposed to one that was topped and disshaped, but it's really not my property or my personal decision. It does become an issue for me and my neighbors when we are visually reminded of what was done poorly to these very prominent trees. I do not feel that the homeowner should be punished with a fine for these actions as they were only following direction given to them by the city. I do feel that the city is at fault as they did not properly supervise their staff in this unique situation that could have been averted with better oversight and discussions with the homeowner. I hope this can become a learning lesson on what not to do in the future, and hope that you would consider revising the tree ordinance plan in order to include some sort of narrative specifically outlining tree pruning procedures and permit requirements for such pruning. One other thing I was.
Ms. Giles, the alarm has gone off once and twice, so if you could wrap up your comments in a few seconds, I would really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, I apologize. One thing that I didn't place in my letter that I wanted to bring to your attention is that in the past year, there's been about $250,000 that has been collected by our city for fines for people that have done things that are outside of our ordinance this year. And I would hope that those fines could be put into some sort of funds for a tree replacement plan. Oftentimes, when parkway trees are dead and diseased and the city has to remove them, Mr. Estrada pointed out that there's really not a lot of money left in the fund in order to replace those trees. But we've already collected $250,000, I'm just curious where those funds go, and why they can't be used for a tree replacement program for parkway trees that have been removed because of dead and diseased. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think to answer your question in part, and Director Sivantes can as well speak to that, that we collect fines differently, and we also have a budgeted amount, a line item for tree replacements. And there is money in there, but my understanding is from Director Throne, that the city has been holding off and removing and replacing trees because that is a proper, I'm going to say best practices, to do so in the winter or spring months. So there will be a significant amount of tree, dead tree, city tree removals and replacements upcoming. That money is there and has not been spent yet, it's just we don't do that in part. I don't know if it's enough, and I would love to have a larger budgeted amount, but that that work is, in my view, a surprise. But that that has been a situation where we are going to proceed with that once we get to the colder, possibly wetter months, that that work will proceed. So I have been asking about that as well, and Director Throne had, and our urban forester have informed me the same, unless you, Director Throne or Director Sivantes, would like to further comment on the inquiries by Ms. Giles.
That's exactly the plan, Mayor.
Thank you. And as to the other comments about pruning, I'm hope, I think it is our hope by putting in the permit process and making it clear that we are going to have a free and more educational items attached. I think the next version of our tree ordinance will be much more helpful to residents and hopefully avoid what I agree with you are what was brought to our attention, a difficult and resulting ugly situation on that corner. But are there any other public comments, either emailed or written, that have been submitted?
I do not have any further emails, and I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom right now.
All right, so then I think since there's, my understanding is since the ordinance changes are so extensive after today, this won't be the first reading, that we will go back and actually have a first reading, hopefully at our November meeting, and proceed if that can be done in time. Or I guess it has to be posted within a certain amount of timeframe, so not. As soon as possible.
We'll do it as soon as we can, and you would basically need to continue the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm hoping to continue the public hearing to.
November 18.
November 18, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A vote call?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Mayor Shepherd coming?
Yes. Thank you very much, and thank you to the staff who's worked very hard on this matter, and planning commission who also brought good comments to bear on improving our situation. Next, we're going to the first item on our new business, approval of appropriate, item number two, approval of an appropriation from the general fund reserves in the amount of $66,700 for termite abatement for the city hall campus, and appropriation from the capital improvement fund reserves in the amount of $108,500 to perform electrical upgrades at the police department necessary for state mandated 911 system improvements. And can I have a presentation from Director Throne first, or Chief Akbar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Shepherd, Wong. The item before you this morning is a recommendation to approve a plan to humiliate the city hall campus, and take the opportunity presented to make important capital improvements to the police station. The department has prepared the plan before you with extensive collaboration with the police and fire chiefs. Succinctly put, the fire station is infested with dry wood termites, and the police station is plagued with termites and gnats and spiders. The presence of these insects has impacted the safety and comfort of public safety personnel. To add to this situation, over the course of this very hot summer, it became clear that the 1995 remodeling of the police facility is unable to withstand the demands of the loads of critical computer systems now needed for log enforcement. Public Works was able to replace an air conditioning unit that served the computer service room within the adopted building maintenance budget. However, the building's electrical system cannot support any additional power demands, and it needs to be improved so that the 911 emergency system upgrades can occur. Police, fire, and Public Works developed a plan to address both of these problems. We propose to humiliate the police, fire, and city hall buildings over the Thanksgiving holiday weekend. All the buildings would be closed to the public and to city personnel. Fire will temporarily relocate to trailers and the city hall corporation in our area for that time. City Hall.
I'm sorry, you're asking to stop for just a second, your microphone is not actually picking up.
Is it closed? I can start over again.
No, no, no.
But I'll just keep going, all right. City Hall would be closed to the. City Hall would be closed to the public only on Wednesday, only on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And personnel will be relocated to other city buildings so that they can conduct their daily business. We will notice the one day closure beginning next week online and at our public counter. We will also notice our residential neighbors that they might see more cars parked on Roanoke due to the displaced city employees parking. Because of the other work needed to occur at the police station, Chief Contra and I propose to close, to house all police operations and trailers beginning the Monday before Thanksgiving for the following four weeks. This plan allows Public Works to have the electrical work performed without interrupting police operations and will provide us with time to take care of other budgeted capital improvement items, such as reflooding the public lobby and work in the emergency operations center. We prepared a list of other potential work that we handed out before this meeting. These optional items can be completed by the end of relocation or shortly thereafter and can be added at the pleasure of the city council. The schedule is predicated on taking the opportunity of the long holiday weekend to disrupt fire and City Hall operations for the least possible time. To make this work occur and to faithfully follow the Public Contract and Code and the Seashy Purchasing Ordinance, we are fast-tracking the bidding process. To have an electrical contractor on site and working before the first day police has moved into their temporary trailers, which is scheduled for Monday, November 23, it is important to have all the contract paperwork completed beforehand and the work underway. Bids are due for the electrical work this coming Monday and your next regularly scheduled council meeting is November 18. If we waited to November 18 to award a contract, electrical work cannot commence until December. It is our recommendation that to keep on the proposed schedule, the City Council authorize the city manager to execute on your behalf the electrical construction agreement so that the contractors are all set to go. Before I turn, before I conclude our presentation, I'd just like to quickly summarize. The chiefs and I are recommending that the City Council approve work and services related to the fumigation and appropriate funding for it from the general fund reserves. We're also recommending that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute the construction agreement on behalf of the City Council for the lowest responsive bidder in the amount, not to exceed $108,500, and appropriating funding from the capital improvement fund reserves. As part of that motion, the city manager will provide the council before here next week a copy of the bidder's notes. This concludes the staff's presentation. Yes, the manager reminds me that of this very fabulous table that was shared with you last night and is burning it this morning. What it has, I think, broken down into two categories, those projects which are operating in nature and those projects in work that is capital in nature. What we've done is we've listed some of the other work that potentially could be added to the menu of projects and activities that could occur during this period that the police department is outside of its home. You'll see that on the operating side of things, those kinds of work includes repairing some cracked basery along San Marino Avenue, repainting the interior of the building. We have some malfunction in the toilets that we'd like to replace. The basement walls need to be cleaned and coated to prevent them from blasting moisture. And there's some plumbing behind the VOC walls that are causing issues in the basement as it relates to moisture. On the capital end of things, you do have some funds in there for electrical upgrades, obviously, VOC improvements, remodeling the public counter at the lobby there. The police department's currently not accessible and it would be great to do that while they're out. The carpeting in the building ideally would be replaced with hard flooring, just like what we're doing over in the fire facility. It's much more organic, it's cleaner. There is some dispatch center remodeling. The chief and his staff have ordered the furniture already, but it won't be delivered in time. And that's something that could be done while the building is occupied. The front and rear lobby doors, the front lobby doors and the rear access door out to where their police vehicles are, we've repaired them, we give them credit anymore, and we would like to upgrade them to police rated doors. The last item is something that was recommended in our facility's condition, we do, that was done last year, and that's to actually include a fire alarm system. The building is not alarmed or sprinkled at this time. It's, the first step would be to sprinkle the, sorry, to alarm the building and then plan as a capital improvement for the future, putting in a fire service which is obstructive. We would really need to have that engineer cost it out. But we did get an estimate through our facility condition report last year cost the alarm system and that certainly is something that's done during this time period. And that explains the table to have a-
All right, Chief, did you have anything to add? Should we ask questions? Well, we'll ask questions after both of you speak. How about that?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this is-
Yeah.
It is, okay. Excuse me. I have additional photographs to share if necessary. However, the, I think, just a quick narrative. We have a lot of bugs in the building. Bathrooms, both floors, in the dispatch, we've had dispatchers. You see butt bites requiring medical attention. We have termite remains, I guess is the best way, wings and other body parts, and the light fixtures, the plastic. I've had spiders crawl across my shoulder a few times as it dropped from the ceiling and also other bug parts throughout the station. It is kind of an issue with ground. Officers like to have a clean location. We have done quite a bit with Public Works to mitigate this over the past couple of years with spraying, we stand scheduled spraying. However, it has not remedied the situation. Also, Councilmember Jacobowski, a couple of years ago, it made mention of the front of the facility and now you can see dry rot termite damage to some of the parts that wouldn't structure at the entry point to the station along with the diminishing wood of our lobby, which is not inviting, it's probably the least inviting spot in the city. But beyond that, I'm more than glad to share the photos and answer any questions that you may have, especially concerning electrical and the issues we are attempting to do with our dispatch center and level.
May I just add a couple of comments as well? You all have been aware that there have been issues in the police facility for quite some time. We've considered items about doing assessment, about doing a full overhaul. So although we've had concerns about the facility going on for quite some time, I would say that they have accelerated in terms of urgency in the last couple of months. So I don't, I certainly don't want you or the community to think that this is coming out of nowhere. It isn't, but we didn't have this clear awareness, as we do today, of how critical and time sensitive some of these fixes are. If we had, obviously, this would have come to you differently, but that's why this is coming outside of a budget cycle and with a relatively short timeframe in terms of discussion and why we've hurried through the analysis of this to try to get it to you so that we can make some of those corrections and we can also take advantage of what is potentially conveniently the only kind of four-day weekend that we normally have over the course of a year.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Thong?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah. So what is police rated door? Is that going to be for the front entrance?
Yes, we would be replacing the front entrance door and the rear entrance door. The rear entrance gets used hundreds of times a day and we pretty much stripped all of the screw holes in it. We'd also like to be replacing them with a little bit higher rated door, one that's more secure, has better glass to help protect the police folks on the inside if they have to close it urgently for whatever reason. These are doors that existed in 1995, they do get used a lot, and they're worn out.
So this is for the police department?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I was thinking of the City Hall. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
I have no questions and the reason for that being is it is our customary process here. I did meet with Director Throne, Chief Contra, and City Manager Marlowe this week and got a very, very thorough presentation on this and I really appreciate it being that thorough. Thank you.
I also had questions asked and answered in our meeting, but I did want to ask Director Throne and the chief to speak to. When I look at this, the request that makes the most sense is while, is for some additional work. And so we asked you to come forward and that's this new document that I hope we'll put up online. So what I'm seeing here in this document is an additional $17,500 that is the operating fund project that are the additional, so they can check my math because not my strong suit, how much am I supposed to? So, you know, but anyway, so that's how I'm reading. That is the additional things that you've come back with and they do, I think, have to do with some of the, for example, the one that concerned me is the cracked masonry. And I wanted you to just speak briefly to that for the public so that we know what the structural engineer has done and assessed and where we are with that because I do think that's a concern. It's not a large cost, but I would like to know what happened in that regard and I think the public would.
That was discovered or identified by the consultant that did our facility condition report last year on the building. This is an exterior masonry wall. It has a very nice series of cracks right along the mortar line. It's apparently had some sort of vertical displacement to it which has caused that crack. They're not, the wall's not in any danger of any immediate failure or anything, but it does present not only an aesthetic issue but also just a general maintenance issue. You want to have those cracks and you want to have those joints re-pointed so that you've got a good water barrier for the facility on the other side of the wall.
Right, and so, okay, and thank you. The structural, it's not a structural issue and that's been examined. It is a maintenance, a long-term longevity for the facility that those would be repaired.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, and then now if we go to the bottom section, I'm going to say the capital fund project. It looks on this schedule, because this is the first time I'm saying this, so I'm bringing this. We, the one, first item, the $108,500 is for the electrical upgrades that we've discussed that are needed for the 911 and we can do that now. In addition, the ones that are most pressing right now that we need to decide on today would be remodeling the public counter with accessible counter and replacing the carpeting with hardwood floor, which kind of goes to some of the other, the paints, the cleanup after this is done. So that's $23,000 that you're asking that needs to be immediately. My, the reason why I bring that up is I know that the Public Safety Commission as well has spoken and they would like to be involved in reviewing sort of some of the things and I don't know if they would be the appropriate party because the other items, the last three, the dispatch center, the doors, and the fire system are things that aren't going to take place over the Thanksgiving break when you're moved out. Those will take more time to get in place and act on. So I'm wondering whether those can be reserved and go before Public Safety Commission so that they could talk about the choices and see if there are other things there. Would that be an appropriate demarcation or do you have some thoughts on that?
I think that's totally appropriate, Mayor.
Actually, sorry. You're being bookended by two people that don't understand. Part of what we were trying to do is save your agenda space and so if these were things that you might be interested in, you could, you could appropriate the funds for them subject to approval by the Public Safety Commission and that would enable us to loop them into the process while still not having to then return to you again to discuss it here, go back to them, back to you. So that might be an easier way to do that.
Okay, and that's, and I appreciate however the structure. So just trying to figure out what we decide today. You want us to, these are like a max cap and we'll talk about whether we're comfortable with the numbers or not and then specifics you can work out. I just want to make sure if there are any, any things. And Chief, I noticed you were nodding your head, so if you could help me out here.
The only thing I would like to amend based upon your comment was the 911 furniture for dispatch has already been approved for this year. So that would be good.
Okay, so that's in a different category, I'm sorry. Right, and so then the other two at the very bottom could be something that we could either leave out or add in today depending on how my colleagues feel about that. And I do think it's important that we do these and I appreciate that you quickly, both of you, went forward with the process and tried to come through because I do think the condition of the police building is quite low and I think it would be good for everybody involved to use this time to clean it up properly and then move forward because it's obviously something we're going to keep and that was the assessment. So I appreciate the hard work and the quick work that staff and you both did, your officers in particular, as well as Throne, your department, to get this going. So thank you very much for the prominence of your work. I would like to open this up now for public comments. I don't know if there's anybody online or if we have received any emails regarding this subject. I don't see anybody here, but if you could let me know.
Sure. I have not received any emails on this item and I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
Thank you very much for checking. So we will bring this back to council for discussion. Are there any comments about how to proceed? Does anyone have a direction? I started with Councilmember Thong.
Yes, I'm in favor of getting this done. One thing that always drives me crazy, especially with Public Works, is we put in something new and then we have to dig it up to put in a new line. And so this makes sense and I agree with the mayor's comments that we should direct at least the replace lobby and fire entrance doors back to the public, back to public safety so they can make a determination as to exactly what is needed.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, I can support this. Thank you.
And Councilmember Jacobowski?
I'm coming from a different place. When I met with you earlier this week, I talked about my experience of visiting the police department when we were looking at capital improvement projects and part of that was redoing the lobby and looking at dispatch. And while I was over there, your staff graciously gave me a tour of the whole building. Oh my, what a mess. The layout is poor, the amount of deferred maintenance is extensive and you mentioned, Chief, one of the things that we had looked at earlier was the entrance and whether it's dry rot or termite or whatever it is. And I went so far as to suggest to the three of you a possible motion for a utilization study that went beyond what was covered last year in the report that we had. I've got a real problem with Band-Aid issues. I see that this train has left the station. I didn't realize we already had the electrical bid out and the like. And I am concerned because you're talking about things that went on this summer and employees having bites and the like. In retrospect, we did have a bit of a lead-in to this and I would have deeply, deeply appreciated that at that point, public safety doing a deep, deep dive because we want you to have a great facility. It was built in 1962 and there's been no major renovation. The two-story heart was added in 1981. I simply feel that we're using a number of Band-Aids and I do think we're putting lipstick on a pig. It would have been my strong preference that- It would have been my strong preference that rather than receiving something, as I said, where the train has already left the station, that we could slow this down and do it properly, including a utilization study. Is the layout good with what it looks like at the police department? Are there functions that could be changed around? Is the lobby size the right size? Should it be larger for different citizen issues? I don't know the answer, they're just rhetorical questions. As we discussed, we're getting new police vehicles, they're going under the old aluminum I just feel this is a lot of Band-Aid work, and even after my recommendation for the utilization study, we're being given more Band-Aids. So I want you to have what's best. I suspect our community does also, and I'm disappointed now that I'm looking at it, that it's coming to us this late in the process, and fundamentally, I'm not in support because I'd like for you to have something better. So that's where I'm at.
All right. Go ahead.
I'm just going to say, if it's helpful, obviously you don't have unanimity at the moment on how you want to proceed, but if you are working your way towards a motion to include all of what's on here with stipulation that we take the bottom two items to planning, sorry, Public Safety Commission for sure, I believe Director Thron is working on a motion for you. Alternately, of course, I think Councilwoman Jacobowski's potential motion would look something like, slow down a little bit and authorize a, direct a utilization study, which is probably a simpler motion to craft.
Actually, I would first like a more thorough vetting by the Public Safety Commission, because we want to give you something lovely, not something full of Band-Aids. Then a utilization study, because the public safety could give input, as I said, to layout, to exterior issues, and really get a feel for what that would look like. I suspect I'm in the minority, so I'll, I'm fine with it, however my colleagues wish to proceed.
And I apologize for mischaracterizing, that would indeed be an easier direction.
And may I comment? Originally, I agreed with the idea of an assessment being taken a look at for the whole thing. However, given that we have the immediate need for pest control and the immediate need for electrical upgrades, we might as well take advantage of it, because if we're taking a look at what we're doing, I don't think even with an assessment, we would be looking at the major type of renovation you're suggesting based upon an assessment report for a couple of years anyway, and we need, we need this done right away. And at least this will buy us time to do the assessment project.
If we do the bare minimum of what's already been brought to us, I can support it, but I really am opposed to any additional items, counter improvements, lobby, because I think we've got a better way for the city, and I think what we have, I don't know if you've done the tour, it is one ugly building in need. I would not live in a home that looked like that.
May I ask, Chief, Chief, how do you feel about this? Do you want like an overhaul better, or you just want to bend it right now?
A couple of Band-Aids.
It could be both ways.
Bend better. More bend.
I, Councilmember Jacobowski raises some outstanding points. However, we've reached a critical point. I cannot operate because I have no electrical. When someone uses a hairdryer, someone adds in several other things that need power, and my station goes black, it's clear that since the electrical system hasn't been upgraded since at least 1985, we are not capable of, correction, 1995, we are not capable of operating. The need for electrical devices has dramatically increased. Next fiscal year, I'm going to be asking for some additional devices that we are going to be mandated to have as part of the racial bias reporting system that is mandated by the state, and we will need additional electrical drop upon the station. There may be a mandate that we obtain body worn cameras, and that has another demand, both based upon computer usage to electrical usage. We are maxed out. It is our home, we spend many, many hours in that place, and it is not a healthy home right now. It is important that we do an assessment. We don't have a location to really interact with the community as most police facilities do. To have the ability to host meetings, to have the ability to bring in other organizations to meet with us, and ensure we have transparency and partnership with the community is important. To ensure that the officer's got a safe place to work and a healthy place is important, and that would be part of a long-term study, and that certainly could be something that we initiate immediately with the Public Safety Council and be prepared to discuss during the next budget for next year. But in the meantime, some of these things, except for the last two, and maybe the counter, but the counter is an ADA issue, need to be taken care of, but the facility as a whole needs to be assessed properly. We want to make sure that we protect our assets, the new vehicles, the new motorcycles, the new equipment inside the vehicles, we have to make sure we protect those items. And the other important amount of financial dedication by the council and the community for the, for the police department, we need to make sure that we hold that dear and that we are very careful with that investment that you've provided us.
Thank you.
All right, so I think that Director Thron, did you have a suggestion as to how to move forward if we want to go forward with these items? I appreciate Councilmember Jacobowski's bringing this to our attention, and I think that's great, and if Chief and the Public Safety Commission will continue to work on improvements that were enumerated here and trying to figure out how to work those in in the future, I appreciate that. But I do think we need to make a motion on, or move forward with the work that's most pressing at this time. So do you have a suggestion, Director Thron?
I have a suggestion to modify your first motion, which would be a modification essentially to change the appropriation from $66,700 to $84,200.
Right.
And add to that motion in front of you the phrase and the five maintenance projects listed on the table. I will read you the whole motion.
So someone could just say so. I think we could do it, but go ahead.
I can't, I appreciate it.
Yeah, just right enough.
Okay, well, we'll discuss the chains. I would suggest that an appropriate motion would be, I move to appropriate $84,200 from the general fund reserves to account number 1015341500000, building repair and maintenance for the work and services related to the publication of the City Hall campus and the five maintenance projects listed on the table, which would include repairing cracked existing masonry wall, repainting all interior walls, replacing malfunctioning toilets, cleaning paving the basement walls, and repairing the plumbing behind the EOC walls.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Council, sorry, Mayor Shepherd-Gon.
Yes.
Right, that's part one.
And second?
To make it cleaner on the motion, because it would be extremely long and people would get lost in it, I would recommend that you keep the motion for the electrical system as it's written, and have an additional one that will include the other items, because there's more instruction in that.
All right, so can, do I have the motion? Does somebody want to make a motion as it appears in our packet regarding the electrical work?
I move to appropriate $108,500 from the capital improvement fund reserves to account number 394-30-4600-1983, construction, electrical remodel to upgrade the police department's electrical system and authorize the city manager to award a construction agreement on behalf of the city council, and owes responsible bidder an amount not to exceed $108,500, and to make a report to the city council as to the bid results.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Clarification, please.
Sure.
So the $108,000 would be separate without the addition that takes it up to $171,500?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wong? Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepherd-Gon?
Yes.
All right.
I have third motion. The third motion that I would suggest based on your conversation would be, I move to appropriate $23,000 from the capital improvement fund reserves to an account number designated by the finance director to remodel the public counter and replace all foreign within the police facility, and separately review the police department lobby and rear entrance doors and fire alarm system concepts with the Public Safety Commission, and return with the recommendations at a future council meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepherd-Gon?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your workarthy, and thank you for your suggestions. All right, so we will go to the, sorry, last order of new business, approval of third amendment to city manager employment agreement. Can I have a presentation from the city attorney, please?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor Shepherd-Gon and city council members. Following the city manager's performance evaluation, council instructed the city attorney's office to prepare a third amendment to the city manager's agreement that memorializes three distinct directions. The amendment extends the agreement term by one year so that it is extended until October 15 of 2022. It increases the base salary by 3% to $212,473 effective July 1, 2021, and it increases the medical and other health benefits program by an additional $100 per month, $100 per month, consistent with an increase for all other employees such that the city will contribute a monthly amount of $1,500 for those benefits that's effective October 16, 2021. Since the document reflects the council's direction, the recommended motion would be to approve the third amendment to the city manager's agreement. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you as well.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Jacobowski?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Tal?
No questions.
All right, I would like to now open it up to the public for their comments. Do we, I don't see anybody here wishing to speak, so do we have any other, do we have any email or comments online through Zoom or other platforms?
I do not have any emails or written comments for this item, and I do not see anybody requesting to speak on Zoom.
All right, then at this time, I will bring this back to council for discussion. Do we have any comments? Is anybody, I think we've discussed this with the city attorney and the city manager. Do we have any other discussions or matters to discuss about this? Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I will move to adopt the city attorney's written summary of the proposed amendment to the city manager's employment agreement that is set forth in the staff record and approve the third amendment to the city manager employment agreement.
Second.
Do I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Mayor Shepherd-Gon?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have written communications or public writing. Do we have anything other than what we have received directly in our packet or since then from the acting city clerk, Marlowe? Anything else that has come in?
I do not have anything additional for you.
Thank you very much. Last, we have our public comment section of the meeting. We don't have anybody here who wishes to speak. Do we have any general public comments at this time?
I do not, I do not have anything written, and I do not see anybody requesting to speak either.
All right. Thank you. Then I'll close the public comment section. We have a new, I believe, Dr. Marlowe described, future agenda items. These are things that have come to our attention, and we want to raise and see if we have support to put this on a future agenda and allow staff to inform us. So does anybody here have anything that they would like to add at this time?
Yes, I would like to see what shade brought this morning regarding the colonial kitchen and the postman, yes, I would like to see that.
Delivery service fees and that type of thing. All right. Do we have three people here?
I would support it.
Sure. Okay, so then we get the rest of staff to look into that and then bring something forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jacobowski, do you have anything?
Nothing else at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Tal?
I have.
I wanted to bring up, and I know that Director Savant has left, but the issue about the wood roofs in our city, it's been an increasing problem for planning commission due to, I guess, what we would say is a lack of alternatives. So I would like to bring that forward and have a staff of report prepared as an agenda item for us to consider. Are there other council members who would like to see that as a discussion point on a future agenda?
I would as well. Thank you.
Do I have a third?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we would. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, you've done it for the first time.
We went through that so well.
We used to do it right, but it wasn't really on the agenda. Someone had this suggestion, they would raise it, yeah.
Okay, so we just wanted to put it there because it seems like it's not yet.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea.
And I didn't, I didn't have.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea.
Thank you. Next, we have a closed session, so the city council will be recessing into a closed session at this time, because we don't know how long the closed session will be. When I recess the open session, staff will discontinue the public participation via Zoom, and anybody wishing to hear the attorney's announcement after the closed session can come to San Marino Center, or the announcement will be memorialized in writing in a minute. And before we recess, are there any public comments about the topics on the closed session agenda?
I do not have anything here.
Thank you for checking in. I don't see anybody present at this, so thank you. I will now recess. The open session meeting of the city council will reconvene, who discussed the two items, which are, sorry, public employee, again, it's only one item, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957, the title is senior counsel. Thank you very much.